Hey, all right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. I think most of you have signed up for public comments, so I look forward to hearing from you. This is the Select Board meeting of Monday, January 13th. We are at the Bennington Fire Facility, third floor. My name is Jeanne Jenkins, and I have the pleasure of chairing this board, and I will invite my fellow Select Board members to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Nancy White.
I'm Ed Woods.
I'm Tom Haley.
Clark Adams.
Jean Conner.
Thank you all. And also with us tonight, here tonight, is our town manager, Stu Hurd, Nancy Lively, who takes excellent minutes. We have Jonas Spivak, who is our Communication Coordinator and making sure that all presentations are done at the high level that we expect, which is great, and Josh Boucher, who is here for Cat TV filming us live and has been coming to numerous meetings over the month of January to film us, so we appreciate it very, very much. First order of business tonight is to amend the agenda. We still have one item to address on the budget, so our first order of business is a motion to add an agenda item called finalize budget, and I think we could either make it 6A or 8A. Anyone have a preference? Before or after policies? Let's make it 6A then, okay. Could I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second. Super. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any... Uh-oh, that word's going to go away again.
Absentions.
Absentions, thank you, Tom, that's your job. All right. All right, so we will continue as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ed, would you lead us?
I will.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in broad.
Thank you very much, Ed. Let's see, Tom, would you read our vision statement that guards our work?
I will.
Thank you.
Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much. All right, so next up, we have the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of December 9th, 16th, and January 2nd and 4th, and also the warrants, and a couple liquor licenses. For the purposes of discussion, could I have... I think the only person that was missing all those meetings was Sarah, and she is not here, so could I have a motion to address all of those sets of minutes?
One motion to address all sets of minutes, so moved.
And just the warrants, just do the warrants.
One motion to move on the consent agenda.
Thank you, that's it.
I need a motion.
We can do this. All right.
We have a second.
Thank you, all right. All right. Let's see. Do we...
Discussion.
Yes, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
The December 9th minutes, lines number 42 and 48. I am making an assumption that there is no Mr. Clark on this committee, because it's Clark Adams.
All right, so we can fix your name.
You know.
I didn't even notice it. Well, you're Mr. Adams on line 35, so...
Well, I mean, I'm just pointing out, you know, the inconsistency there, so are we talking about Mr. Clark?
We'll fix it. Yeah, you can be Mr. Adams all the way through.
Maybe those minutes weren't so excellent this time.
I'm glad you caught it, Clark. All right, and I had a question on line 153, which is on page 5.
Are we still on the ninth?
Yes, we are still on the ninth, sorry.
155.
153, on page 5. I am just wondering if it should say... I'm looking at the sentence that begins, "The unusual circumstances." I believe there was, if not said, an implied piece that was in the case of Jean's statement, because otherwise you have no idea what we're talking about here. So if we could just add, and I don't know if it needs to be in parentheses, I have no idea if I said it, or if it was implied.
I don't know what you want to add.
I want to add, oh, I'm sorry, so before the unusual circumstances, can it just say, "In the case of Jean's statement"?
Oh, all right.
Just so we clarify what we're talking about. Anything else on December 9th? Okay, how about any of the other minutes? Yes. You have a question? Yes.
On the minutes for January 2nd, I feel like there needs to be some more context in those minutes to capture what we were discussing in the section of that meeting that was open.
Okay, all right. And I, you know, I will say to this, this was a meeting that was supposed to be executive session only, and we added an agenda item that was an open meeting, which we had not anticipated having, and I pared down these minutes some, and my... I think, we all know that we're struggling to find our balance, and I think we're coming to it, but I also, we're trying very hard to address behaviors rather than individuals, and that is the constant comment that we get from the LCT, that it is the behaviors you're changing because the people will come and go. But I also, and, and, they also were clear about if you need to give an example, then you need to say who's involved in that example, but the example is not the, or the context is not the thing, the behavior's the thing. So given that, do you have, do you have a suggestion of what you think would help provide more context to this?
Actually, I don't, but if, can we table these minutes and take them up at the next meeting, and I'll write something up?
Yeah, how do we do that?
Just pull them out, don't vote on...
I would have to amend my motion.
Yeah, okay.
So if that's okay, I'm going to amend the motion that says that we are discussing and approving the, let me get this right, the meeting minutes of January 9th, 16th, 2024, and January 4th, 2025.
Okay.
Holding out the January 2nd minutes for future discussion.
Okay, all right.
You need a second.
Thank, oh.
And I'll bring, I'll bring the language to the next meeting.
Will somebody second that motion? Tom seconded it, okay.
If you clarify, it's December 9th and 16th, not January 3rd?
Yes.
Yeah, because he said December, he said January 9th and 16th.
Thank you, December 9th and 16th, 2024, January 4th, 2025. The motion is on the table. Thank you, Nancy.
All right, thank you. All right, so let's continue. Anything on the minutes, the budget session, January 4th? Nothing? Okay, anything on the warrants? Can I ask on page 10? I think, I just don't remember why, why we're doing this. On page, oh dear, the bottom of page 10, M&amp;T Bank, I don't have my glasses out, I can't read the number, there, what are these, what's the extra principal and the interest on the Irene note? What is that for?
In 2011, the town was authorized to borrow without a vote of the public money sufficient to deal with the flooding from Irene. We have been paying that note off without going to the bond bank, and so we budget a little bit every year to try to stay ahead of this so that we can get it paid down.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else? Are we satisfied? Anything with the liquor licenses? All right, satisfied with these minutes, the warrants and the liquor licenses? All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, good, we'll pass. All right, public comment is up next, which looks pretty exciting, I'm happy. I do want to remind people that public comment is for items that are not on the agenda. Try and stay within three minutes, and if you, please be civil, and please, I think, keep in mind the LCT and Robert's Rules, best practices, and our own procedures, which is if you are bringing anything up that addresses behaviors, please address behaviors rather than people, except to provide context for what you're saying, but please focus on behaviors. We are, we are working to become a board that can work together, but we also, but we also recognize we are imperfect, and we also recognize there are areas where we still need to make improvement. So with that, I'm going to say, I want to start with Nancy Cosiel, who's getting up to talk about good news, and I'm just going to say that I made Nancy come tonight, and she was very, she was like, "No, I'm not doing this," and I'm like, "No, you have very good news, and it really should be shared with the community." So I thank you for, for coming.
Yeah, thank you for inviting me, I appreciate it. Does everyone hear me? Okay, great. So, good evening, I'm Nancy Cosiel. I am the founder of Couch &amp; Cork, which is based at 113 South Street in the historic Drysdale Building, and my colleagues and I built Couch &amp; Cork, starting in 2019, into the premier global provider of corporate virtual wine tastings. And tonight, respected members of the Select Board and community, I have some really exciting news, and I appreciate being asked to share it. Couch &amp; Cork's success story is not just mine, it belongs to everyone in our community. It belongs to Linda and Phil from the Bennington Bookshop, who invited me to do my first public tasting. It also belongs to Park McCullough, because we were the first to do virtual events in Bennington when people were frightened and needed a time in the pandemic to experience joy and connection. We've since worked with businesses and nonprofits like Bennington Museum, the Hospital, Green Mountain Academy for lifelong learning, and the Bennington Theater to elevate their events and also help them raise money during fundraisers. We've worked very closely with the Chamber, who we appreciate and who have supported our very unique business model since the beginning. We donate what we can annually, both to local nonprofits, and we also take pride in funding education, both music education for school-aged children, and also we sponsor a scholarship for young people of color who wish to start learning about wine. Our corporate roster now includes Amazon, DoorDash, Bayer, and Zoom, who last year named us as their favorite vendor. This would not be possible without the local women who work with me and support everything I do. I would be reticent if I didn't mention Kaya Kirk, Eva Capella, Michaela Lewis, Kara Thatch, and Casey Rich. About a month ago, Zoom asked me if I would speak at an event that was held this past Saturday in New York City, kicking off the National Retail Foundation's Big Show, which I didn't know, so if you didn't know, is the nation's largest retail conference. They asked me to talk about building a business in a rural community. Most of our clients are based in large metropolitan markets, and they were surprised to hear what I was doing from my dining room table here in Bennington. The event this past Saturday was attended by 75 women C-suite of major retail corporations, including Nordstrom, Macy's, Sephora, Patagonia, the parent company for Marshalls, we told them how excited we are, and Couch &amp; Cork's youngest employee, Eva Capella, who some of you may know from Prospect Coffee House, and me. When they asked us if we could contribute a prize, a door prize for the event, we saw an opportunity. Instead of just bringing a gift card or a bottle of maple syrup, we said, "We're going to create a Discover Bennington County basket." Couch &amp; Cork invested $250 in buying locally-made products made by women or from women-owned businesses. We had a lot of fun putting the basket together and knowing that while we were going to be at this event in New York feeling very out of our depth, we were bringing everything that we love with us. At Couch &amp; Cork, boldness is at our core. We pivoted during the pandemic from in-person to virtual, we've brought connection to people around the globe, we do what we can to support our community, and we don't shy away from charging what we're worth while delivering value, and that's an important message from us, especially to women in this community who want to do their business. So often, we are encouraged to do things for free to get recognition, or to do things for less. If me and my ragtag team could build what we have, charging what we're worth, so can anyone who has a desire to start a building. Bennington is full of creativity, grit, and bold ideas. I am here to say that I'm very proud to live in this community and to be supported by this community, and am thrilled that for a few minutes I got to bring us to the center stage. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations, Nancy, and thank you very much for sharing that with the community.
Nancy, that wasn't so hard, right? You're, you're, you're expert in that, thank you.
And full disclosure, I didn't cut her off at three minutes.
Yes, right, no, I know.
I just couldn't do it.
No.
Full disclosure, I couldn't do it.
Okay, all right, all right, yes, which is the last reminder, that Jean is our timekeeper, and she has the handy-dandy...
So she spoke for four minutes and four seconds.
Oh, no! Okay, all right, so next up, Ken Millman for Riverwalk.
Good evening. I'm here to invite everybody to the Riverwalk this Saturday, 10 o'clock. This is going to be a special Riverwalk, 10 o'clock, at the Depot, on Depot Street. We walk the Riverwalk, this is, this Saturday is the fourth anniversary of the murder of Emily Hammond and Emily's mother, Carol Lee Carroll. We'll share reflections and invite the community to remember Emily at her memorial on the walkway. In addition, we are going to be honoring Dr. Robin Tarnas as our unsung hero of the month, and at the end of the walk, we're going to go to the Bennington Free Library and celebrate their contributions to the community, and I hope everyone comes, 10 o'clock on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Let's see, next, introduction, is it Doug C. and Patrick K.?
Good evening.
Introduce your, yes.
I'm Doug Cardoza, and this is my partner, Patrick Kincaid, and we just wanted to introduce ourselves and let us, and say thank you, actually, to the town of Bennington for walking us, walking, welcoming us in. We just bought the Allegro Building and are renovating it, and we should be ready to open the King's Knitwit, which is, that's what we are, the King's Knitwit, and we should be ready to open it in about 10 more days. So we wanted to say thank you to the town for, for everything that they've provided for us, and all the extra funding that has gone into it, and we just want to say thank you and wanted to introduce ourselves.
For those who have no idea what the King's Knitwit is, it's, as Allegro, it's basically in two sections, the front of the store is going to be a high-end yarn knitting and craft shop, we're going to be selling spinning wheels, high-end yarns, teaching lessons as he spins, knits, crochets, he does everything, from the sheep to the shawl, and the back, for those of us who are not great knitters, is going to be a coffee and wine bar, one of those places where you can get a wine slushy during the summer, or a nice hot toddy during the winter, when it's nice and cold.
Otherwise known as the husband drop-off place.
Or we call it the sip and knit, so we want to say thank you and just introduce ourselves. Hello, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You look forward to your opening. Great, all right, let's see, Thomas Sheets for social media.
Nice to see you in town, Mr. Sheets.
Thomas Sheets, Bennington. As I just mentioned, I've been out of town for several months, and so I've been trying to keep up through the newspaper and through watching meetings, and part of that includes using social, using social media to watch the meetings, and I've been a little bit disturbed that there seems to be so much vitriol and libel and negativity on there, so I would urge us all to do our part to make sure that social media can be a more positive place for information and more cheery things than what I see on there now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas.
Susan Plisant, social media.
Well, that wasn't planned. Good evening, Select Board members. Last Monday, I sent out an email, email to the group emailing some concerns I had about social media. While I appreciate that some of the concerns were addressed, one critical issue remains unresolved, and I feel it's important to bring it to this forum tonight. The issue pertains to a Facebook page, and my name has been brought up in discussions on this page, which imply unprofessional behavior, which I find both surprising and disappointing. I want to make it clear that I have spent countless hours volunteering to improve this community through Warm the Children, through community events that I volunteer for or I organized, and many others. My focus has always been on creating a stronger, more connected Bennington. It's troubling to see a Select Board member maintaining a Facebook page that has not been properly vetted or monitored. Platforms like this, when unmanaged, risk representing, misrepresenting the professionalism of the board, discourage constructive community engagement, and expose individuals to unnecessary negativity and misinformation. These issues undermine the integrity of our leadership and the trust of the people we serve. I strongly, I strongly urge appointed representatives to take immediate action and address the integrity of this platform. Additionally, I must address another concern. A member of the community who has officially filed to run for the Select Board has used this page and others as a platform to publicly disparage my name without ever engaging in a direct conversation with me. This behavior is not only unprofessional, but also harmful to the spirit of the transparency and respect that should guide anyone seeking public office. As a community, we deserve leaders who engage in honest and direct communication. Resorting to public disparagement without dialogue only deepens divisions and distracts from the real issues we face. I ask the board to take these concerns seriously and consider implementing measures to ensure that all communication, whether through social media platforms or political campaigns, upholds the standard of accountability, fairness, and professionalism. At the end of the day, we all want what's best for Bennington. I believe we can work together to foster respectful dialogue, constructive solutions, and leadership that reflects the values of our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Susan.
Making statements like that are not easy, and I, and we've had several, and I really appreciate people being willing to stand up and say this kind of stuff. It's, it's important, it's very important. All right, let's see, meeting importance, Jason Fredrickson.
Jason Fredrickson, Bennington, Vermont. Good evening, Select Board members, town employees, and our incredible community. Thank you for the privilege to speak tonight. I've been watching and listening to Select Board meetings since the early days of lockdown. Over time, my interest in becoming more visible, vocal, and engaged with our community has grown. I'm here because I want to contribute in a meaningful and impactful way. The upcoming election is critically important. I picked up my paperwork months ago, had many conversations, and even gathered the required signatures. Running wasn't part of my original plan, but the encouragement I received has been overwhelming. Thank you all for your support. What truly propelled me into actions were the behaviors, words, and tone I observed during Select Board meetings throughout the spring, summer, and fall. They pulled me from the sidelines of Facebook Live into this fire station and prompted my first public comment just a few weeks ago. Since then, it's been inspiring to interact with so many of you. Hearing your thoughts, ideas, and feedback has been incredibly motivating. As a concerned community member, I see challenges in the current direction and productivity of these meetings. Disagreements are natural, but even when two people don't see eye to eye, progress is possible. Collaboration is the cornerstone of effective governance. It's also essential to protect and honor every community member's unassailable right to speak and criticize without fear of retaliation. This is a value I deeply believe in, even though I've personally struggled with, struggled with that fear. Standing here tonight, given the history of this board's behavior over the past year, I feel that tension, but I won't let it hold me back. You can expect to see me regularly at Select Board and other government meetings, as well as looking actively to participate in various community organizations and local events. When the opportunity arises, I plan to apply for an appointment to one of our town boards, and come 2026, I plan, will probably run for a seat on the Select Board. The upcoming town election is vital for our community's future. Change is happening, and it's up to all of us to ensure the right leaders are in place to continue fostering growth and progress for Bennington. Democracy isn't about getting what we want, it's about working hard through our differences to get things done. We honor our town vision by honoring one another, respecting every voice, even in disagreement. To our Select Board candidates, good luck in the upcoming election, with gratitude and respect, and thank you all for your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Let's see, Jim Sullivan, thanks, and campaign announcement.
I guess you, I guess you do kind of organize these public comments, don't you?
I do sort of try.
My name is Jim Sullivan, and I live in North Bennington. Thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly. I, first of all, I really wanted to thank the members of the Select Board. I know you folks have a difficult job, and you're really under a microscope, and I appreciate all the work that you've done on behalf of the community. Special thanks to Jean Conner and Jeanne Jenkins, who will be stepping off the board in the next few weeks. Also, to announce that I am, in fact, running for a seat on the Select Board, looking forward to the ongoing campaign, and if anyone would like to find out more about me or the campaign, there's a Facebook page at...
Jack Rossermanley, AAUW Bennington Multicultural Center event.
Yes. Hello, Jack Rossermanley, Bennington, Vermont. And I am here because AAUW, the American Association of University Women, in collaboration with the Bennington County Multicultural Community Center, will be hosting an event at the Bennington Free Library at 1:30 on Sunday, January 26th. And that will be an update on the activities of the multicultural center, both as it relates to the refugee resettlement work that we do through the Ethiopian Community Development Council, ECDC, welcoming people from around the world to Bennington, and also the community-based projects that we are currently undertaking and plan to expand in the coming year. So again, that will be 1:30, January 26th, at the Bennington Free Library. And in the happy glow of the good news that we received, I can also let you know that the food for the event will be provided by women who arrived to Bennington as refugees who are in the process of starting their food businesses. They've been catering a number of different local events. Many of you are probably aware of Zakiya's Afghan Food, which is open for takeout, but it will be a chance to not only enjoy their food but also get more information about how you can support their businesses that they're getting off the ground. So a whole lot of things in one event at 1:30 on January the 26th at the Bennington Free Library. Hope to see you all there.
Thank you, Jack. That's great. All right. Last but not least, Will Greer on legislative update.
Can you hear me all right? No, not at all. I've got a really, okay. Like that, okay. I think it, I may have moved it now, but anyway. So I'm going to be headed up to Montpelier, so I was hoping I might have gone first, but that's okay. We had some great announcements, but the roads I heard might be kind of bad. So Will Greer, Bennington. For the remainder of the legislative session, I'm just going to give a soft overview of the bills, updates, and just general news from Montpelier. I'm going to keep it under that three-minute clock going forward. You're not going to be raising that at me because I'll, you can, you can borrow my minute. And also feel free to ask any questions before these meetings. I'll try to show up early enough so that that's possible going forward. So first, I'm going to start off with the tax update. So back in December, the legislature met with the Joint Fiscal Office, and we reviewed the tax letter for the coming year. The Tax Department projects a 5.9% increase, but I just want to, you know, caution everyone that this is preliminary, and there is no way that this will be the final, this will be the final figure. The legislature won't let that happen based on conversations I've been having. We obviously won't know what the final rate for Bennington will be until AOE finalizes everything. And of course, all the school districts are going to have to adopt their budget, so we won't know for several months what the actual figure may look like. And of course, the way education funding works in Vermont, it really is like a pressure luck kind of system, and you hope you don't get a whammy. But the governor said in his address on Thursday that he is hoping to move forward with a proposal around a foundation formula. If you're interested in what a foundation formula is, I'd love to explain it to you and go into the details. It's, it's, it's more of a block funding system, but it's, it's got some nuances. It's not necessarily a bad step to go towards, but we'll, we'll see what the details are of his plan. A committee update, so I was placed on the Committee of Corrections and Institutions. That's everyone's first choice in the legislature, by the way. We will be overseeing, though, and this is the important thing that I'm starting to realize, the capital bill, which is about $100 million that the state puts towards projects for infrastructure, and, and that includes water, sewage, historical preservation, a bunch of different things. So we'll be meeting with the Treasurer's Office this week, and we'll be going over our bonding capacity and what federal dollars might look like depending on how we spend it. Just going to highlight a few bills that you're probably going to hear about in the next week or two. The big one is the Social Security tax exemption. That has been something that the state has worked tirelessly on for many years. Vermont's one of only nine states that still taxes benefits on Social Security. The way the bill's written is it's going to increase that exemption for several years until it's ultimately phased out. There's a lot of states that have been doing it that way. And I'm glad, of course, to have sponsored that bill, and I believe there's about 40 or 50 representatives that have done that so far from across, across the aisle. So we have tripartisan support on that. There are a few bills that I'll personally be circulating that I've authored and been working with Ledge Counsel on. One of those is a payout for accrued vacation time, so earned benefits that employees have with their employer. Another expands on access to birth and death certificates, so increasing accessibility around that. We changed that system about five years ago from a very open system to very closed. And I think we may have gone a little too far in the closed direction because probate's been backed up with some of these cases. Of course, public safety grants, sheriff appropriations, that'll be something that you'll be hearing about from me. And there's a few others as well that pertain to the town and just general issues. But again, please contact me with any questions you have, and I'm sure the other representatives for our town would be more than happy to be reached as well. So thank you all.
Thank you very much, Will. And I'm sorry, I didn't realize you needed to travel tonight. Sorry.
Another full disclosure, I let him go because I didn't think it was fair to cut him off when I didn't cut Nancy off. Next meeting, we're back to three minutes.
All right. No more Miss Nice Guy.
No more Mr. Nice Guy.
Okay. All right. Next up, floodplain restoration project, the Woodford Packers site, Dara Zink. From BCRC is going to talk to us about this. And tell us what you also, what you need from us.
Okay. Hello, everyone. I am Dara Zink from Bennington County Regional Commission. I am the Emergency Management Program Manager for the BCRC. I wear a couple of different hats. I do emergency management. We talk about response, and we also talk about mitigation. Today, what I'm here for is some mitigation work. I brought my own pointer, if I can get it on. There we go. All right. So I was contacted by Vermont River Conservancy a few months ago. Some of you may be aware that due to the flooding in 2023, the state was awarded a lot of money from FEMA to go ahead and do some mitigation throughout our state, about 90 million. What happened is that VEM is kind of consolidating all of these funds, and they are working with the municipalities throughout the state to create mitigation programs to help prevent flooding. And it actually doesn't include just flooding, it includes other hazards as well. For the first round of funding, they are looking to do some buyouts. And another thing is floodplain restorations, which they've prioritized. Here in Bennington County, we put in multiple pre-applications for use of those funds. Almost every single town put in a pre-application to access those funds. In Bennington County, two towns have been prioritized. Manchester has a project that's been prioritized by the state, and Bennington has been prioritized by the state, which is really exciting. They're looking at us, they know that we need help down here. So I was reached out to by the Vermont Rivers Conservancy. They are not eligible to receive these funds, and they said, help us make this project happen. So let me tell you a little bit about the project that they would like to do. On Route 9 here, as you're heading out of town towards Woodford, many of you are familiar with the pull-off, the chain-up pull-off, right, on Route 9? Let me know if I turn away and you can't hear me. Usually I don't need a mic. So right across from the pull-off is a property that is generally referred to as the Woodford Packard Site. This was actually a Supreme Court case here in Vermont, and it allowed ANR to start regulating fluvial erosion hazard zones. And this is the site now that the state would like to rejoin the floodplain here between the Roaring Branch, and this is all floodplain. However, this beautiful little site back in the early 2000s was allowed dumping. So people, I don't know if everybody remembers, maybe not, I know we've got some younger people here. People were dumping fill there. They were dumping concrete blocks. There's about 10 to 12 feet high of concrete blocks and fill there. And so this Roaring Branch, just as an aside, runs right through town, right? This is the one that goes behind the high school. If we reconnect this floodplain here, what this means is it will slow down all of that water running into town. So it will help decrease any sort of flooding into our downtown area through town here. The state has been looking at this project for years. They've been trying to get funding to do that. So the funding for this will come from FEMA. It is going to be 2.2 to probably about 2.5 million dollars. What I am here to ask is that the town of Bennington be the sub-applicant and the recipient of these funds. And you have a bonus. You get me. What that means is that the state has actually contracted with regional planning commissions across the state to fund employees to actually work for grant, to manage those grants for you. A lot of our towns are small, and they lack capacity at this point. And so the state is seeing that, they understand that, and this is one way of addressing that lack of capacity. So I would, will actually be contracted, and it's already begun, to help do these pre-applications. I'm already contracted through, through the state to do that work. But I will help write this application. I actually will write the application. And then should the town of Bennington be granted those funds, I will actually act as the grant manager for those and get this project off the ground on your behalf. The town doesn't have to pay anything. There are no matching funds for this. This is a completely free project for you. All the time spent on it is my time contracted through the state. So I am asking the Select Board if you would like to be the sub-applicant, and if you would like to be the recipient of the funds, and if you would allow me to work to get this project off the ground.
Thank you. For the purposes of discussion, can I try and, try a motion? Okay?
Sure, and I'm happy to answer questions, obviously.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So what we'll do, if we can, if, if we can make a motion, then we'll have discussion, okay? Okay? So a motion to, for the town to be the sub-applicant for the Woodford Packers site, Roaring Branch Floodplain Restoration Project for the full amount of the, for the full amount of the project awarded, or the full amount awarded for the project, and to support BRCRC's role in project and final application development, and if awarded, BRCRC's role in project and grant implementation, implementation support.
Correct.
Yes?
Yes.
I wrote it out ahead of time.
I was like, that's really good, Jeanie.
That's really good. I'm going to make that motion. Thank you for writing it.
Someone second it?
Second.
Okay. All right. All right. So any discussion? Yes?
I just have one. Do you anticipate the amount of the award will be enough?
Yes. So, yes, yes. The state is heavily involved in this project, and they want to see this happen.
Any other questions? Nancy?
That was, that was my concern, seeing as we're still paying off the bond for Irene, and we have more years to go, so there's no chance that someone would come to the board in a year or two and say, we need help from the town?
Not, my understanding from the state is no. We're going to write this application for the biggest amount that we can. That should cover everything.
On here it says 1.7, they think the project, and you said, how much will?
Right. So when we wrote that, that was, forgive me, when we wrote that, that was as we were developing this project and trying to get a feel for everything. There was an engineer that did this work previously, we have met with them, and kind of got a feel for a bigger budget. We haven't submitted to the state yet. So after talking about that budget with them, taking in, this is from 2023, that budget, after taking into consideration some inflation and some increase in prices, we're looking at probably 2.2 to 2.5 now. And the state is aware of that.
Okay.
Yep. I am, been going back and forth with them very much. We're besties, it feels like.
So if I may?
Yeah.
I think, Nancy, thank you for that. I think that our motion has language that, that captures the total cost of the project, if that, can you reread the motion? I'm sorry.
Part one was the town be the sub-applicant for the Woodford Packers Roaring Branch Floodplain Restoration Project for the full amount, I said awarded, to the project. We can add a third piece to that. We can amend the motion to say, I mean, part of the reason to have Dara here from beginning to end, right? Soup to nuts, is to make sure that we have sufficient.
Right. And the final application hasn't been submitted yet. So as we develop this application, as we look at the scope of work, that could potentially flex a little bit, that dollar amount, as we continue to develop it. So I can't give you a very specific dollar amount tonight. We have until April 30th to submit the final application, and as we work with our partners to get those dollar amounts in, it, it could flex a little bit.
So Dara, I think, though, I think the concern is, say you put it in for 2.5, and it turns out it costs 2.6.
Right.
Who's picking up that, yeah?
Yeah. So the, the state and I are working on that, and, you know, we don't want that to happen to the town. So we'll put it in for, you know, max, max amount.
Okay.
That's a fair question.
So nothing, for clarity, nothing that this board might be committing to by approving this motion puts us on the hook for anything above the award amount?
Right.
Right. Thank you.
Clark?
I, my question or concern relates to, you mentioned this was an area that we use for dumping or fill or so forth.
Right.
Issues of potential brownfield contamination.
Yep.
Associated with, as we're talking about cost, is there going to be some sort of a mitigation of what we may be responsible for if this turns out to be a hazmat site?
So I cannot speak to that, Clark. I'm going to be honest with you because we're still in the process. There will be testing done. I have actually already put in an application to EPA to review, you know, coming out and testing this. If it tests bad, I'm not sure what's going to happen after that. And I can look into that for you all and get back to you, because that's also a valid question. You know, what happens if there is something wrong in there? If there is something that makes it ineligible to move? And then what happens?
So Dara, are you saying that if, if it turned out to be a highly contaminated site, are you saying that you, that the project might not go forward? Is that what you mean when you say, I don't know what's happening, or?
If it is a highly contaminated site, I would assume that would increase the cost, in which case the state would have to reevaluate the funding for that.
Right. So it's not putting us on the hook?
It's not putting you on the hook, except what are we going to do with this site now?
But if we approve this tonight, it doesn't put us on the hook if?
No. All that's putting you on the hook right now is that you are, you're not really on the hook, but we're fishing here. All you're agreeing to tonight is allowing me to do the application on the behalf of the town, and that you would be the recipient of the grant funds, and then I would manage it. And, Clark, I can definitely, I'm going to reach out to VEM and get you answers for those questions, because those are really important questions.
Jean, and then Tom.
I already spoke.
Tom, and then Jean.
I'm just speculating here, but if it turns out to be highly contaminated, and there's a risk that it floods and all that contamination, that might make them really want to take care of it and.
Right.
And somehow find the money to, to take care of it, even if it's more than they were anticipating.
Right. And there is, there is additional funding coming through the state from the successive disaster responses. So in 2024, there was flooding. At the end of 2023, those were declared disasters, and so additional funding is coming to Vermont because of those disasters. So that might be funds that we would tap into in that case if it is bigger than what we anticipate. I can't promise anything, I'm not FEMA. Think, you know, they've got their hands full. But those are other options that we could look into, should it be, you know, should that be contaminated and be a much bigger thing. When you walk through it, I took a walkthrough with. so additional funding is coming to Vermont because of those disasters. So that might be funds that we would tap into in that case if it is bigger than what we anticipate. I can't promise anything, I'm not FEMA. Think, you know, they've got their hands full. But those are other options that we could look into, should it be, you know, should that be contaminated and be a much bigger thing. When you walk through it, I took a walkthrough with Don Campbell, who is the owner of the property and who is on board with this, he's very excited. You can actually see, it's mostly concrete blocks, you can actually see kind of into the fill in some places, it's mostly concrete blocks and just mostly clean fill from what you can see, but obviously, you know, we've talked about testing it to make sure. It's about 10 to 12 feet high of fill.
So I think I know the answer to this, but I prefer it be said out loud, I think. Is there, if you reach deep into your imagination and come up with every possible worst-case scenario, is there anything involved with what we're voting on tonight that could negatively impact the town or the taxpayers?
No.
Great, okay, that's, that's, thank you for asking that, Tom, because what we're voting, what you're asking us to vote on is for you to proceed.
Yes.
Figure out how much this is gonna cost, write a grant application for that.
Correct.
If something comes up that changes that, then, then the, the people reviewing the grant have to decide whether they can provide any money.
And the state can decide not to move forward as well with this. They have a whole prioritization system, and like I said, there are, there were 417 pre-applications put in across the state. They whittled them down, prioritized them, but they could come back and reprioritize prior to final applications being evaluated. But the fact that we are being noticed, we are being seen, I think speaks volumes. They just did the Brattleboro floodplain reconnection, that, I wanna say, end of October or November, they, you know, cut the river, the ribbon on it, and they did not cut the river, but just the ribbon. And so that was very exciting for them. And so, you know, when VEM, Vermont Emergency Management, reaches out and says, "Let's do this, let's prioritize that," it's really great that they see us, they know that we need help down here and we wanna protect our town.
Superb. Other questions from the select board before we open it up to the public?
Yes.
Derek, Derek, is it, I mean, when you read through your, your presentation here, you talk about decreasing the depth of flooding and decreasing the velocity of floodwaters, but basically this is a earth, earthen removal project.
Yes, yep, and so what will happen, I'm gonna use my pointer again, otherwise I'm gonna move away from the mic. Okay, so what will happen is that this will be lowered 10 to 12 feet. Right now, what is happening is it is channeling all this water from the Roaring Branch, so if we look at it up here, right, it's coming kind of east of Route 9, southeast here, it's gonna cut across, and then here is where Woodford Packard is. Right now, all of that water, when there's a high rain event, it's being, like, pushed, right, very quickly through a small channel. If you open that up, it allows the water to spread and it allows it to slow, and then that, by removing that, now the water can spread all the way through here, slow down, and then we'll put a little earthen berm here, just to kind of help assist that water to get back, now that it's slowed down, kind of guide it back into the river and send it on its now slow and gentler way.
And that, that's because the bank to the north of the river is already steep.
Yes, so, so that one's not really moving.
Understood.
If we move this, that's gonna go ahead and slow that water. Does that make sense?
Other questions from select board before we move to the community?
Yep.
You're mentioning how that mound reducing that will widen the flow. I'm looking at the angle of that river, are you actually going to be addressing the riverbed itself or just strictly that floodplain?
Just strictly the floodplain. We're not going to be digging into the riverbed, we don't want to dig into the riverbed. It's literally just removing this mound here. Am I answering your question, Clark? I feel like I'm not.
Well, to some extent. Under the current circumstances, how much of that river flow ends up on that floodplain surrounding the, the buildup area? Or does that area flood? Right where you have your point?
Right here?
Does that area flood?
So this, this is not, like, it's not a great scale. So there, actually, if you're out there, this is not a huge distance here. So it will come up and over, but it doesn't allow it to fan, to really come out and really slow it down. So this is increasing the size of any water that would come out here, it's still pretty close to the channel, it doesn't give it a lot of room, this is gonna really open that up, really let it flood out, and then slow down and then come back in.
But Dara, you don't decide that, this is decided by engineers.
This is decided by engineers.
This is done by experts.
I will be honest, I am not one of them.
Yeah.
Hold on, I, I'm just trying to conceptualize what is going to transpire when you lower that mound down, and where we're at now, I can't say I've ever been there, see how the water flows through that area.
Yep, so instead of it flowing through that smaller area, it's gonna spread out.
Okay.
Yep, so that water will come towards Route 9, not on Route 9, and I've already sent this to Vtrans to, to review. But it will come towards Route 9, really spread out, really slow down. Could, you know, will it alleviate everything if we have a huge one? Maybe not everything, but it will definitely help to slow that river.
And it's only gonna do that when it needs to.
Well, yeah, 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 yeah.
I mean, the river is gonna remain as it is.
Yeah, it's in its channel. On a regular basis, it's in its channel doing its little happy river dance, and, and then only when it comes up over its banks will it access that. It's, it's, you know, like a farm field next to a river, right? You see every spring when that water gets really high and it spreads out. That's what it's gonna look like, you know, during high water events.
All right, so I wanna bring us back, because we are not discussing, it's like the curb cut issue, we're not discussing what the river's gonna look like as much as whether we want to approve this project going forward. So I wanna ask anyone in the public if you have any questions for Dara from BRCRC about this.
Ken.
Is there someone?
We gotta come.
Oh, come on up, come on up. Ken, you have to, you have to, like, wave.
Who's gonna end up owning the land?
That is Don Campbell's property currently, and he will retain ownership of that. He is looking to conserve it, however, down the road.
So if it's turned out to be hazardous, then he'll have a responsibility to clean it, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And the way I'm thinking of it is like you have a hose, you put your thumb on it, the water comes out really strong, so this will be like taking the thumb off the end of the hose and making it a gentle flow.
Well, it'll actually spread out, so like, yeah, kinda, yeah. Yeah.
All right, and that was Ken Millman, okay. Yeah, okay, you have a que, no, I'm sorry, if you have a question, you need to come up, you need to identify yourself in, at the microphone and ask your question. This is so Cat TV can, can film you.
No problem. Hi, my name's George Charas, I'm new here, but my father's been here 50 years. I'm just curious where the property is, like, so I can get a visual on it.
As you're going toward Woodford Mountain?
Okay.
It's, you know where the chain up?
You'd have to tell me by where stores are or businesses are. What's that?
Papa Pete's.
Papa Pete's, just past Papa Pete's.
Know where it is.
Yep, so the chain up's on the right and then the property will be on your left.
Yeah, because I just want to talk in visual. I understand.
Oh, no, totally get that. I'm a visual person, too.
All right, any other questions? Select board, any other questions? Are we ready to vote? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, the ayes have it. Thank you so much, Dara.
Thank you, Dara.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, let's see, so next up, proposed changes to the resolution for Community Policing Advisory Review Board, and we have Kate Cost and Kelly Carroll coming to the microphone.
Good evening, Kate Cost, Bennington, I'm Vice Chair of CPARB.
Kelly Carroll, Bennington, Chair of CPARB.
Yeah, no, that's okay. So we wanna explain, one, how we came to this, so first slide. So it, within the context of the, of CPARB's resolution, it says that we need to review this every three years, so we're coming up on the third year, which is in March. And what we found is that it wasn't really working for us. There were things in there that we couldn't do, there were no data, there were issues there that were different than what we were actually doing, okay? So just to lay the context out, it, within the context of the past, this came out of issues within the community over several years, this was prior, before I even moved here, and the community was really looking for a change in the Bennington Police Department's culture, okay? The model that was used prior to 22, prior to March 22, was a very traditional law enforcement model. It doesn't allow for any discretion, it's a strict adherence to the letter of the law. That's the bottom line. This is the law, this is what you do. So in March 22, after much discussion and many meetings with community members, CPARB was established, March 22, as a town advisory review committee with volunteer members. In the present, at this point, we have developed a training and collaborative relationship with BPD to educate the community about what community policing is. We've held eight small listening sessions. The first year of BPD, of CPARB, there was a large community event where people were invited to talk about what community policing was and their issues, and now, in the second year, we had these eight small listening sessions. We went to Willowbrook, we had kids from CRJ, we had seniors, we had clients, we had agency staff, you name the population, we went there, okay? And so we heard what they had to say, but we also discovered that they had no idea what community policing was about. And so we endeavored then to explain to them what the differences were between traditional police enforcement and what community policing was, is, okay? We heard about officers' use of de-escalation attempts, collaboration, and discretion. We also heard about interactions that were unpleasant, we heard about times where residents were fearful and uncomfortable, and we paid attention to those, and we passed those comments on to the chief and the lieutenant of the, of BPD so that they could identify training opportunities, okay? But, you know, changing a culture and a community is never smooth, it's never easy, it's never fast. And so as we discussed the findings with BPD, it became more important for us to take a look at the resolution and, and make it a, sort of a living document, knowing full well that it guided our, our actions, okay? But it became apparent that many of the community policing principles identified by DOJ, Department of Justice, were not in the resolution. And so what we look to do in the future then is to fully demonstrate the principles of community policing, because it's about developing a relationship between the department and the community, and that means all parties need to change. All parties need to address their issues of trust, of collaboration, just part of the process. No relationship is successful if only one party is gonna change, right? So next, so these are the principles of community policing, I don't expect everybody to know them, we've been living with them for a while, okay? So it encourages, and I can give examples of these if anybody wants them, okay, just let me know. It encourages community engagement, there's a decentral, excuse me, decentralization of command with consistent supervision, there's systematic and interactive collaboration with community partners, sorry, I need to stay closer to this, orientation, orientation of patrol activities emphasizes non-emergency services, it sets realistic expectations of officers, it increased accountability to the local community, and it's a focus on crime prevention, not just law enforcement. Okay, next slide, please. And so the purpose of our revisions is that, and I'm not gonna go through them all, I'm gonna respond to questions that you have about those revisions, is to really clarify the role of CPARB. We wanna connect our goals and activities to those principles of community policing. We wanna create measurable and attainable goals, so that in, in next year's report, we can actually show you how and what has changed, how we've improved, et cetera. We want to identify specific and relevant activities that achieve goals and provide a timeframe for, for achievement and, and to support activities, okay? Any, any questions that you might have? Did you want me to highlight specific changes in them?
I, I think it would be helpful if you, if you could just, like, give us the highlights of what is changed, I think, you know, materials for review, training.
Okay. Some of this was just really a language issue. What we have found is that in the past year, we only had four complaints to the police department. And what we did is we reviewed those complaints, because this came out of complaints about the police department, right? And so we had four complaints in the last year, and they were resolved to our satisfaction anyway. And so we accepted findings that the department had and asked questions for clarifying, all right? So to create any kind of a database on complaints made no sense when you only have four, all right? And we got more compliments than we got complaints, okay? And so, but what we did wanna do is we wanted to look at and analyze safety data that is in the town survey, which is something that we did in the last year, and took a look at another, only very few questions on, on safety. So it was, do you feel safe in your neighborhood? Do you feel safe in town? And that was about the extent of it, okay? And so we tried to identify, we, we need more information, obviously, what does safety mean to different people? And that's what prompted our listening sessions. And from there, we found out that, you know, having an officer walk around your neighborhood feels safe, but there were some, like, when we talked to the kids at CRJ, one of them said, you know, "I don't trust the police." And so we said, "So what is it about that? Did you have an experience? What happened?" "No, they just don't trust the police." So they had no experience in contact with the police, it's just that it didn't feel right to trust the police from where they stood, okay? And that's, that's a wonderful example of implicit bias, right? So it's, it's all about that education, but it's also about exposure. So officers will, will go to the high school more often, and, which is what they were doing when, when Gracie was still alive, okay? They would go, they would visit classrooms, et cetera, okay? So we want, we also wanted to make recommendations about policies and procedures, so we've taken a look at some of, some more of that and made recommendations on some video changes, which is prompted in the budget, where there'd be upgrades to the technology that the department is using. We also wanted to clarify when our report was due, and, because that wasn't in the, the last resolution. There also was no content about actively engaging individuals and organizations in the community to support a culture of inclusion, trust, and accountability. Because in the end, we really do want to be able to, would you say, manifest? I suppose that's very aspirational, but that's what the vision is all about, is aspirational, to have an engaged, inclusive, welcoming, and resilient community. to have an engaged, inclusive, welcoming, and resilient community. And a big part of that is the relationship that the community has to the police department. We also wanted to make sure that we had information about materials for review. We wanted to clarify membership, and we wanted to clarify the training that CPARB members have, the composition, et cetera. So, those were, those are some of the highlights.
Okay. Super. Thank you. Do you want to, should we stop there and select board members can ask any questions that they might have? Anyone have a question? Tom, yes?
I have more of a comment, I think, than a question. You've clearly done a lot of work on this, and you
Thank you.
I know from watching your meetings that you spent a good deal of time on it. And I'm wondering, I am seeing things here that I really like, and I'm also seeing some things here that I don't think will quite address some of the issues that you've expressed that you're having. And I, I would think that this board, I think, should take as much deliberative stance before we finalize this new resolution as you guys did. Several of us weren't on the board when the original resolution was done, and I don't know how deep into the weeds you want to get on this tonight.
Can you, Tom? Well, why, I think, I think what would be helpful is if there are specific areas you want to address, let's start doing that, and then if, if we should move this, if, if we should, you know, have a conversation tonight and move this, to finalize it at the next meeting, I mean, that's fine. Did you have something specific you want to bring up?
Well, I think the section under materials for review, which I think is an excellent addition.
Okay. Page two.
Page two.
Yep.
Line 17. I think that the language still, in here, may still not be strong enough.
Shall provide?
Well, on a specified or an as-needed basis, I think we might want to actually specify when certain things might be
I don't know that we know.
Offered.
I mean, what if they don't
Should they get the traffic data quarterly?
So, what do you, yeah. Would that be helpful?
I'm sorry, say
Would it be helpful for it to say, to get the traffic data quarterly? Or would that kind of specificity be helpful, or would it hamper?
My understanding is we get the traffic data when the department gets the traffic data. Right?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, the traffic data comes out annually from the state. That comes out, it has to be out by, I believe the date is September 30th for the prior year. And that's when we get it, and it does get posted everywhere. I don't know if that answers your question, but we don't have access to quarterly traffic data, and we've been told that we have to wait until it comes out from the state. So, I don't know if there's a workaround for that or not, but I can certainly check and do it.
Well, just, I seem to remember when the chief was in here talking to us about their new reporting system, that it was going to be easier to get this data more quickly. And maybe I misunderstood that. I don't know.
I can follow up and let you know.
That was what was going through my head when I was thinking about that, you know?
Can I make a follow-up while you're thinking?
Yeah.
I'm wondering if the example was one that we might get stuck on, and that is that the data is only available annually. But I'm wondering if Tom and others might be interested in zeroing in on the frequency of the review of the materials that you'll be receiving. And maybe that's to hold everybody accountable. Right? And I don't, I'm not uncomfortable with that at all. I think I'm for that. I'm wondering, and I don't want to put words into Tom's mouth, but I'm wondering if the "shall provide" without any more parameters around it, leaves it too open, and it really doesn't solve the issue of lack of data. And I have heard you speak of lack of data.
One of the challenges, which I think you heard at, at the department's budget meeting, was the fact that, that currently, it's, it's Cam, the lieutenant, who draw, who does the data analysis. Okay? And which is why they want to add a full-time analyst position so that we can get that information. But that's an addition to what he already does in terms of his day job as an officer and, and, you know, supervisor. So, I mean, part of this is, and I don't, I'm not justifying anything, I'm just simply explaining something.
I understand, yeah.
That there's a time factor here. And there's, despite our efforts to add in the fall, and, and we lose it in the spring, there are truly only 24 hours in a day. And, you know, it becomes an element, an aspect of how does, how do we add to the workload here? And so, we've been relying on, on the state to give the data. And rather than trying to have, I mean, I, I mean, you can ask for a quarterly. It's whether or not, it can be a timely issue and where they get the data. So, for example, we had asked, we had wanted to have traffic data that identified state of residence. Because what has been suggested is that many of the traffic stops that sometimes go south are from folks who are in, outside of Vermont. They don't live here. They're going 110 on, on 279 or 7. And, you know, a moose is waiting there to greet them. So, the issue then becomes, the state does not collect state of residence data. So, it's not available. So, even if we wanted it, we couldn't get it.
But this is a different, so I, I think we're talking about two different things here.
Maybe.
Yeah, I, I do. And, you know, I think we all are very sensitive to the amount of work that the police department has. We are also very sensitive to the fact that we put together, the select board put CPARB in place because there was a need. And collaboration has been at the forefront of that all along. But part of the reason, my understanding is part of the reason the materials for review are actually listed in here is because you have not been getting the data you, you need. And, you know, I think there are lots of reasons why that doesn't happen, but if, if you can't do your job because you're not getting the data, then, you know, maybe it needs to say from the BPD or, I don't know, the state police. I mean, I, I don't know what it needs to say, but the, I think the, the issue is, we want to make sure, I think Tom is asking, is this language strong enough to get you the data you need? And that is with the understanding that right now, all of that burden falls on the lieutenant to do it. And, and we recognize that. And, you know, the analyst is in the budget. Hopefully, that will alleviate some of those problems. But is there, is this language, I think, you know, it could just say, the BPD shall provide the following materials to the CPARB, but, you know, I mean, maybe the, maybe those qualify, maybe those qualifiers are a problem. I don't know. But, but I think we're trying, we want to make sure that you have, that, that you have the, that you feel empowered to ask for this data.
So, I guess my question to you is then, are you suggesting that this be on a quarterly basis?
We don't have any idea. We're asking you.
You're asking us.
Would it be helpful to say that? Would, would it be helpful to say, you know, you want it on a quarter? If it's not available on a quarterly basis, then that's not a useful thing to say.
And the same solution might not work for every bit of material that you suggest that you need. Keep that in mind.
And what brought this to my mind, really, was when you said that, you know, you were having trouble creating a database because you weren't getting the data. If we're only getting data on an annual basis, well, that database is also going to be very slow to develop.
So, perhaps I misspoke. It's not that, in terms of complaints and compliments, it's not that we're not getting the data. It's that, that there were only four complaints.
Yeah.
And so, to create a database out of four, with four as your N, that makes absolutely no sense. And so, so we deal with those on an individual level rather than, and safety data, or traffic data, I'm sorry, traffic data is coming from the state. So, we can ask if we can get it more often, but I don't know that we can. And safety data comes from, right now, it comes from the town. And so, that's every two years. That's my, that's my understanding.
No, that's safety data. That's not safety data. That's, that's, you're talking about the community survey?
Well, the
That's hardly data. I mean, I'm
Well, then, I
It's feedback.
Yeah, it's feedback.
Yeah. Yeah. So, I, okay. So, I think our question, or maybe, and Tom's question, is, is this section feel strong enough to you? You know, what would, what would give you, what would make you feel empowered to ask for that data and if, and come to the select board, come to the town manager, and then if you don't get it from the town manager, to the select board to make sure you get the data you need? We're trying to empower you here.
So, if we were to, if we were to get as a, get rid of as, as needed
On specified or as needed.
So, the following materials to CPARB shall provide. It's just that that leaves it well, that leaves it wide open. So, if the, if the statement, and I don't know how much of this you want to go through here, BPD shall provide the following materials to CPARB. So, you get rid of, on a specified or as add-needed basis. Except that that gave it some kind of a context in terms of time.
I think just keep it, I, I think all we're trying to do is make sure you, you've got what you need. And I will say, on the data of complaints, part of the reason to collect the data on complaints was that the, the impression among some people in the public was that there were a lot of complaints that were not being followed up on. So, I think, in fact, the fact that you have a data point, you have four data points is, is very good information to get. It's not like you had 200
No.
That you needed to. So, that's, that's all to the good. I think that is excellent. I'm happy to hear that.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
First of all, I want to apologize for not picking up on this earlier because I am the liaison for your board, and it, it just occurred to me.
And our words, neither.
Considering encourages community engagement is the first principle on the list.
Where are you?
On this.
Encourages community engagement.
Oh, you're on, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Should there be, and I'm not saying I have the answer, should there be a section in the resolution that speaks to that principle? I don't know what that could be, but should there be some sort of report out on community engagement efforts, initiatives, that the fact that they're walking around neighborhoods and those sorts of things?
Well, we do have, within the context of the activities, for example, we have obtained an update on community-based safety initiatives from relevant parties. So, that would include everyone from UCS, Turning Point, Benstat, Project Alliance, who we've all had come in and do presentations about what they're doing and their collaborations with the department. We also have, the chief is there, Cam is there almost every meeting, the two of them. And they always give an update on their community collaborations and the work that they're doing.
Okay. Maybe, maybe what I'm thinking about is the camp that they run and the fact that they were there giving out backpacks and those sorts of activities. Not, not, not safety activities where they're collaborating with another agency, but really being trunk and treat, you know, all that sort of stuff. I don't know if it rises to the level where it should be included in the resolution.
Yeah.
That's my question. And you can answer it however you want to answer it. It's just, it's not there, and it's the first principle on the list.
Yeah. And those are community, the community policing principles. So, that's why I said I can give you examples of how the department has achieved those.
No, I'm not asking you that. I'm asking, should it be part of the resolution?
Well, and we didn't think so.
Okay.
Because this was strictly for us. And so, that's why we have this actively engage individuals and organizations in the community to encourage and support. This is, I'm sorry, this is on line nine on, on page two. Through the use of listening sessions, attendance at community events, and other relevant activities consistent with the goals of CPARB and this resolution authorized, as authorized by law. So, because we just looked at this as, so what are we supposed to do?
Yeah.
We, we didn't think about it as, so what are the, what's the police department supposed to do?
Yeah.
This is our, we're advisory to the department. And, I mean, we are, we review their, I mean, Community Policing Advisory Review Board. So, we saw ourselves as advisory in terms of what kind of training they should have, what their, what the gaps are in that, what policies and procedures might be helpful to them, et cetera. Okay?
Yeah. Yeah. And I think that, I think that distinction between the police department is part of the town, and their, their good works are, are talked about through our, our communication coordinator, honestly. That's, that's part of, that's part of his job.
That's right.
Your job, yes, is as an advisory review board, which, which is a little different.
Yeah.
Can I, go ahead, Clark.
I, I want to get back to the advisory role, again, as part of the organization that formed this. I saw or perceived the role would be advisory to the select board on issues surrounding the police department, not necessarily to involve themselves with directing or advising the police department on how they should function or operate. And I, I think we, I think we've had this similar discussion that almost regularly about the important part of CPARB is that CPARB is not involved in how the police department operates. They are to advise us and the community on their findings and issues surrounding the police department. You know, we, you know, talk about complaints. As you said, you know, historically, people were concerned that their complaints weren't heard nor acted upon. I was under the impression CPARB would, in fact, review complaints for thoroughness and for appropriate resolution and refer to those up the line to the select board here.
Or wherever they belong.
Yeah, where they belong, you know, whether it be with the concurrence or non-concurrence. So, I, I think it's very important that we make that distinction. The role of CPARB is not, in my opinion, to advise the police department. Maybe they can say, we've come to this understanding, or we've heard this, but I don't want to make it formally we're the chief or anybody.
Well, I mean, they do have a role, they do have a role in encouraging collaboration.
Correct.
They do have a role in making sure that the community and the police department are, that they, that they are hearing from, from all parties. I think, in terms of going in, I don't, I have not heard, I, I don't think CPARB is going in and saying, we think you need, you know, you need to change this position into a different position because of blah, blah. But I think the, but, but they do have a role, I think, in making sure that, that if there are opportunities for collaboration, if there are ways to strengthen the police department by bringing in new partners, which is part of what Benstat is essentially doing, that, that they should be part of, they should be speaking out. And that's something that would happen at a CPARB meeting, and the police department representatives are there to hear, to hear your thoughts. So, I think, you know, it's not you're going into the police department, it's more, police department is, is, is coming to the meetings and hearing your discussion, it seems to me. Can I ask about Benstat? It feels to me like, so the police department is on the agenda for the next meeting to, and one of the things they'll talk about are the new initiatives they're in. It feels to me like, because that is a way Benstat is pulling together entities that can look at individual cases that are taking up, that, that are either individuals that are contacting the police a whole bunch or clearly, and have clearly complex needs. That feels like that is both the collaborative and the holistic approach that CPARB is, is fostering through community policing. And I am, it feels to me like, one, there should be a representative from CPARB that goes at least occasionally so that they know what these look like, and they can come back and describe that so that, you know, so that you're not missing something that's actually pretty huge in terms of how the police is changing pretty huge in terms of how the police is changing how they're working. And I, you know, I, I did read the minutes from the last meeting, so I was just wondering your thoughts.
So I, so Benstat kind of evolved out of Project Alliance.
Yeah.
It's a group that, of agencies that can actually do something when it comes to the individuals that are involved. And what they do is they track all the occurrences. They have come to our meetings and I think bringing them back to the meetings, maybe on a quarterly basis or something, to talk about what they're doing in an anonymized way is, is, is something. My concern with putting Benstat within the resolution-
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that. I'm not suggesting that.
Yeah, because it was in some of the drafts.
Okay.
Is that it may go away, and if we were invited to Benstat and, you know, one of us was able to, because it does happen during the day and a lot of us do work, we would certainly make every effort to do that. I'm not sure who actually quite owns Benstat as far as if it's a town program, if it's a state program, because it basically started out of Project Alliance with the state. The same with the Situation Table.
Yeah.
I think that our role is really pivotal with getting those stakeholders into our meetings-
Okay.
-and having them, you know, update on, on what we're doing, because the police department is pretty involved in those. They're very involved in them actually, so.
Yeah, no, I think if you're, if, if you are inviting stakeholders in to talk about what they're doing at Benstat, that, that's fine.
Yeah, we've had Benstat in, Project Alliance has come in.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, 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 but it, okay. That answers my question. All right. Other questions from the select board and then let's move it to the public? Tom?
Yeah. Did you say earlier that when you were talking about traffic data available, that they don't collect state of residency?
That's what we were told, because we specifically asked that, because we wanted to parse that out so that we could understand, and it's relevant for ethnicity, right? I mean, Vermont is primarily a white, ninety, what, 95% of the population is white, okay? And so if, and, but we're a border town. And so what we wanted to try to parse out was, were the folks were being stopped, if we could parse that out by ethnicity. And where were they coming from? Were they Massachusetts? Were they New Hampshire? Were they New York, New Jersey, Connecticut? Where were they coming from? So we would have some sense of if there's discrimination going on, if there's bias going on in terms of stops, what's happening there. It just gives us more information. And what we were told is that unfortunately, right now, maybe that'll change, the state doesn't collect, so that we can't, we can't access that. So that's what we were told. And, yeah.
Then, if the data's not available-
Which is surprising, it surprised us.
It doesn't seem helpful to have it included in the list of materials for review. But you did mention other data points there, like ethnicity, maybe gender, maybe age.
And we've got that. We don't have age. We do have ethnicity, though.
Okay.
And so what-
I would suggest that, that we do include the data points that are available in the resolution-
Yep.
-to make for clarity.
Because the data points change. That's, that's, I'm sorry to interrupt. We were told that the, that they were attempts by not just Bennington, but by other communities, that they were trying to have the state be able to collect that information and distribute it to municipality, to, to different departments. At this point, that's not happening. But my point is that, that the collection of data can change over time, and so we just, we didn't want to be so specific that it precluded certain things.
So could we say traffic stop data, including town and state of residence, if known?
Yes, sure.
I mean, right, I mean, we don't want to collect data that-
I wonder if we're getting hung, hung up on specifics when we, and I, my feeling, I shouldn't put words into others' mouths, my feeling is that the language needs to be strong enough so that the expectation is understood-
Yes.
-and, and reached.
Yes.
So that CPARB can do its work.
Correct.
And this, the feeling was that that may not have been the case before, for all the reasons that we know.
That's right.
So what the data set is, I think is less important than the language strong enough to get that data.
Yeah.
Okay, Clark?
One of, one of the concerns during our formation discussions was the collection of data you're requesting. And the police officer who was part of the committee pointed out that within the state of Vermont, I think there's only five items on the citations, and it's uniform across the state. So if you're going to be asking for data, if you're asking for anything that's not part of those five specifications, you're not going to get it, you're just going to be frustrating yourself.
So what if we add, this would be aspirational, right? What if on that second bullet under materials for review, we add traffic stop data, including town and state of residence, of those stopped if known? And that would cover it? Or, or we just say traffic stop data? End of sentence.
Or if we say all traffic stop data that can be provided by the state across the board?
All traffic, all traffic-
All the data. To Clark's point, there's only five data points-
Now.
There's only five data points now, but all data covers us for any time in the future.
All right. So then it's just saying all traffic stop data?
That's available.
That's available. Okay. All right. All right. So, so far, we have, that's the only change we've made. Is there anything else of, can we go to the public and then, yeah, Nancy?
I just want to mention one other thing.
Traffic stop data, does that include the reason why the car was stopped?
Yes.
No, yes.
Some, but not specifics. It does with the tickets.
Yeah, it does. If there's, if there's been a warning, I'm not sure that that is recorded, that's, that's recorded at the state level. And one of the things in terms of discretion has been listening to whatever story is told about the stop and whether, whether or not there's a warning or there's a citation. And I can give you an example of that. I did a ride along, a couple of ride alongs with officers, and, you know, somebody blew through a stop sign. The officer stopped the individual, you know, was going to ticket him, and it turned out that he was late getting to his, to pick up his child from, from daycare. And he was really concerned, ba, 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 dot, 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 dot. And so instead of giving the individual a citation, he gave him a warning.
But on the warning, did it say-
No.
Went through the stop sign?
No.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Well, I think that's kind of important. Seems like a lot of people are concerned about, to me, why was the car stopped?
But Clark helped us at the, a minute ago by saying that there's only five data points collected on the citation from the state.
Well, I'd like to know if that's one of the five.
No.
Also eligibility. I noticed it says if a person doesn't live in Bennington, Old Bennington, or North Bennington, they can either just work here or volunteer eight hours a week?
That's, that's-
On page five, three.
That wasn't changed, that was part of the original. The only thing we took out, because we do have a member who is the executive director of an agency in town, and very active in volunteer work as well, who is unable to find a house, a home in Bennington, and so finally found something in North Adams. And so she doesn't have, she doesn't live in the city.
I thought what the board approved originally, they, they have to at least live in Vermont.
Well, that's what we're looking at right now, is our revisions. And, and it starts to be a bit, it's a bit problematic because we don't have enough housing, as we hear every single day, so, so if you have to go across the state line, I mean, we're on the, we're on the state line, so.
I think we've covered it with community relationship of some kind.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Again, to go back to root of this, this actual decision and that discussion, one of the concerns or circumstances, is a prime example, our chief of police, who is thoroughly dedicated, thoroughly involved with Bennington, lives in Shaftesbury. We have businessmen, again, as she mentioned, community leaders. I think, I can't think of the exact phrase, but basically the idea of someone who is deeply involved with the day-to-day operation of Bennington. So I, I understand how some people may be concerned that they don't live here, but, you know, if you own a business on Main Street for 20 years, that's pretty committed and involved with Bennington, is kind of the decision we made when that inclusion criteria was established.
Yeah. All right. Can I, any questions from the public?
I want to mention one other thing.
Sure. Please.
On page two, line 40, it says that the CPARB will meet at least every two months. That's a change from monthly. And the reason that we're requesting that is so, so we can do more listening sessions and get out into the community more. And that would give us a little bit more substance to our meetings if we meet every other month, and it'll have, we'll have more information to bring back. So that is one other change.
Great.
Kelly, I could, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I was just saying, and it still gives you the, the opportunity to meet.
Meet sooner, but at least every other.
So business as usual, it's, it would be every two months. If something was hotter on your agenda that needed your attention, you could call a meeting.
Correct. Yep.
Anything else? So from the public, any, any questions, comments? Yes, Leslie, please come up.
Hi, Leslie Addison, North Bennington. The document that's in the packet, is this the proposed document or the original document?
It's, it's the proposed document. The original, we had five different revisions, and so to include all of the different colors of track changes, we didn't want to make you crazy, so, because it was making us crazy. So we just gave you the final version of that.
Okay. And is this intended to be the framework by which you are operating? Like this is like your policy procedure document?
Kind of thing, yeah.
Kind of thing.
Yeah.
So there was a couple of what looked to be contradictions or a lack of clarity in some, a couple of places, so I just wanted to ask about or have you look at it or something. But one of it where it is, it says that the CPARB shall be governed by the same general requirements as other town boards and commissions. And the term general, I'm not sure if you mean it will follow the same rules or it will generally follow the rules, and that kind of speaks to Nancy's comment about-
Where is that, please?
It's under considerations on page two of four.
Line 29, looks like.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the exact, you, the document is page two of four, per attachment to your packet.
It's line 29.
Thank you.
Oh, okay, yes. Now I see the lines. I'm sorry, I'm looking really small.
That's okay.
And then the other thing is, the section that's called considerations, if this is like your framework, to me, a consideration is, I'm not sure about how this is. And that might create ambiguity. So when you're requesting information about complaints and compliments, and then quarter they're going to get a summer of complaints, but under consideration, it says that the CPARB, CPARB will not receive or review complaints, that's also a little bit confusing, and maybe there's just a hanging comma that I've misread. But I would just look at those sections. I'm not sure what, what it means.
So consideration, this, the, the headings were from the original charge, so that's why considerations is there. And the reason it is general requirements is because some boards allow people from outside the town, some boards allow people from, you know, only that live in Bennington. So they're all, there are generally, there are differences in all the board requirements.
And for that reason, I would ask, you might want to clarify it, because it will pose confusion, because I'm reading it, I'm not sure which-
That's okay.
-which committee I'm looking at, or which rule I'm looking at, or, and even though that's the heading that's on there, it still begs to question whether it's not yet resolved, if it's still a question out there. So that's all. I mean, just for you, you guys' review.
Sure. Thank you. I was just going to point out that the general requirements regard appointments, conduct, term requirement, open meeting law, and open records law, which you may not have been in terms of scrolling it on your phone, have seen. So those are across all committees and all groups that are governed by the town or the select board. The other thing that, as you point out, the review of complaints, they, those are initiated against personnel of the police. And so what we review are complaints against the department.
That have been reviewed by the department.
That have been reviewed by the department. So it's a practice potentially that they have.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
Yeah. And that is one of the, changing that, the, well, it wouldn't change that part. The, yeah, so the CPARB will not receive or review complaints against, initiated against personnel of the police, nor play any role in civil or criminal litigation. And that won't change, but we, one of the charter review recommendations that people will vote on is to give you the authority, rather than the select board, to review police, the police's review of complaints against the police department.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. What do we want to do with this, guys? Oh, you have a question, you have a comment as well?
Good evening, Jackie Matz, Bennington. I was actually in Montpelier this weekend, but I heard about the budget session. I'm pleased that the select board has begun implementing some of the charter review committee's recommendations regarding CPARB in particular, assigning a line item in the budget to ensure that this important work is funded. Updating this resolution is another opportunity to hone in on CPARB's purpose. CPARB has shown a great willingness to listen to the police and a desire to provide guidance and education to the community. I support adding this valuable role into the resolution. It's also important that we not lose focus on the original goal of bringing the community's perspective to the awareness of municipal government and the police department. The 30-year-old report referenced in the updated resolution says, "The fundamental, the fundamental distinction is that in community policing, the community assists in defining future priorities and in allocating resources." It also says, "Community policing relies on the establishment of a clear, unambiguous link of values to behaviors. By creating a system of performance measurement, specific operational meaning can be given to seemingly abstract values. This is a valuable role that should continue to be represented and emphasized in this resolution." I'm also concerned that the presence of members of the Bennington Police Department during CPARB meetings may serve rightly or wrongly to dissuade some community members from attending, participating, or sharing concerns. A 2018 study conducted by Brittany Fox-Williams and published by Stanford University, she finds that individuals that distrust the police employ various strategies to manage their contact with officers, including avoiding the police altogether and practicing deference by behaving in a submissive manner. Rather than allowing CPARB to meet every other month, especially in light of the work that remains to be done, consider guiding the Bennington Police Department to share updates every other month, allowing for officer-free CPARB meetings in the alternate months that can serve as standing community forums or as sessions where the board can have free-flowing discussion without guidance from a BPD representative. This would allow CPARB to continue their positive engagement with the community in a forum-like setting, without having to schedule special sessions or increasing the amount of work we ask of the public servants appointed to this board. Community members need to know that there is accountability that is reasonable and predictable for the police to be able to do their job most effectively. It's my hope that these changes will foster greater community trust, engagement, and dialogue, increasing the safety of both officers and community members. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. What I think is that we are going to punt this, we're going to talk about this for another month. I think the things that have been suggested is one change under materials for review. I think Leslie's comment just now may be that considerations is a larger heading under which all the, the things that follow fall, I think. So I think, I think it would be worth having town staff look at what, maybe what the formatting on that should be. And then I think, Jackie, your comment just now is interesting. I think it goes more, it probably is more appropriate at a CPARB meeting than here because we're not going to tell CPARB how to set up their meetings. But I think it's a point, I think it's a point well-taken that while you want the police to- a point, I think it's a point well-taken, that while you want the police department to be very welcome and also to be sharing information, you also want that to be the case for the community as well, so.
I just want to add that that was something that we talked about in the very beginning of CPARB, was whether or not the police department should be there, and we really felt that as being a community-based board collaborative and with community policing and the emphasis on that, it was really important for them to be part of the process. And there are times when they can't make it if there's something going on. We originally talked about having BPD report at every meeting, and Tom, you'll remember, because you were the liaison at the time, we didn't want to add another report, another thing that they have to do, so, but we do bring them in, and I think it's important to have them there, because we're talking about community policing and that collaboration and that, that face-to-face and the relationship portion of that for the community is important. I understand both sides, I see that, we've had that with the listening sessions and the conversations as to whether or not they should be there or not.
Right, right. It sounds like it's exactly that, whether the listening session is happening at.
And they don't usually attend the listening sessions.
Exactly, they don't.
They don't.
For some obvious reasons, and you actually do those out, so, yeah, I mean, but I think that's, that feels like that's beyond what the select board should be doing. That's your business, not ours, and then if, you know, if there's concern about it, then maybe it becomes our business, but.
Yeah.
Yes, Jack, and then, and then I think what we're going to do is, is do, yeah, is put this on hold until next week.
Hello, Jack Rosnermanley, Bennington, Vermont. I just, in reading through this revision, and as someone who has regularly attended CPARB meetings, one question I had was on the section describing the training for the board, and the description that's in it right now is lines, starting on line four on page four, which says that members must complete training authorized for the Bennington Police Department chief within nine months of appointment to CPARB. No members may serve as chair or vice chair until they have completed all training. In the interest, again, of bridging the police and the community, I wonder if in this revision it might make sense to enshrine some type of training in conducting listening sessions in community outreach alongside the trainings that are being put together about the operations within the police department.
Great idea. Okay. All right, thank you, that's useful. All right, so, shall we, I think, I think we'll bring this back up next meeting.
Do you want to motion to table, or do you think that?
Yeah, do we have a motion, do we have a, we don't have a motion on the floor.
Right.
So, I think, yeah, I think, let's, let's just put this on the next agenda to finish up there and in between, let's, I don't think we need a motion.
There was no.
Yeah, there was, yeah. Okay, so we'll just, we'll continue it at the next meeting. Okay. All right, thank you for coming.
Thank you for hanging with us.
Yes, as painful as it was. Okay, so, all right, finalizing the budget. Are we having fun yet? Okay. Sick, we're up to 6A, guys. All right, so, finalizing the budget, we had two things. One, we had questions about the rescue squad, and the rescue squad has, has provided additional information. The questions were around the endowment for the rescue squad and whether there was a difference between reserves and endowment. We don't have anyone from the rescue squad here, right? So, and we're just, okay, and we're just seeing this. So, the reality is that they do have a couple million in their endowment or reserves, which I think mean, are the same, is that, was that other people's understanding?
That's what it seems.
And that, that, they say they have 1.2 million, but I think I see more than that, but, but the, the concern for the rescue squad is that they would like to have enough in reserve that if they had to have a federal audit done and had to stop business for, and were not able to bring in funding for a period of time, that they would not fold, right? And they are asking for 18,000 additional dollars to help offset their deficit for next year.
I'm sorry to ask this, but I still am confused about reserve endowment investment. In, in the email that we received, it says 1.2 million.
I know.
But on the balance sheet, it shows 3.268.
3.268, I know. So, I think our choices here, here are, so, they're asking for 18,000. We asked for clarification, this is what we've gotten. We have a couple different choices. We could make a motion to say that we are going to support the $18,000 increase for the rescue squad. We could make that a smaller amount, or we could say that they're level-funded.
Can I ask if Clark Adams has any other insight because of the liaison role?
Unfortunately, no, we didn't have our last meeting because we couldn't get a quorum, so, I, Wednesday is our next meeting where he, I think, gives a better insight. I, too, am a bit confused, I, you know, Saturday, operating reserve versus endowment and all that, I don't think this answers that.
This doesn't help you either.
Right, yeah, so, I said I'm going to meet with him Wednesday, but I think that's important, that we know.
Yep.
What their endowment is versus what an operating reserve is, or if they're two separate issues here.
Do you, are you telling us that we need to resolve this tonight?
We do, we, right, we need.
I would really like the budget to be settled. We still have to develop the warning and prepare that for the next meeting.
Yeah.
So that it can be posted in time for the vote.
Yeah, I think we need to resolve this tonight so that we can vote to finalize the budget.
And I think, I think the issue that clouds this here is that there does appear to be about 2.6 million or more in investments, but as Bill indicated on the, on the email on the front, they've used about 800 and some odd thousand as collateral for future purchases of vehicles, I believe, and so that reduces that 2.6 down to the 1.2 that's available to.
If that's the case, then I understand that, but, okay. So, the total investment value is, we're talking just investments? I'm sorry, total investments, 2.3, right? 2.359?
Yeah, yeah. Unfortunately, I had to give my copy to the secretary so she could follow along, so.
I understand, so, assuming that I'm right, it's a 2.3 total investment minus an 883 line of credit against it lowers the value of those investments?
That's, that's what Bill has written, yes.
In total, that has diminished our reserve accounts to approximately 1.2 million.
Which means that they have essentially in cash available to them 1.2 million.
Which, if you remember, Bill told us that's three months.
He says roughly three to four months of operating reserve, yeah. So, all right, so, what do we want to do? Do we, do I have, anyone want to make a motion? Anyone have any other thoughts? Nancy, what are your thoughts?
Well, we did ask, how much do they have in the endowment fund, whether they're called investments or endowments, that's what it is. We didn't find out what it was.
We tried to just.
I think that's what we're talking.
We just tried to sort of figure that out.
Okay, but we specifically asked to find out how much they had?
Yeah, it sounds like it's not, it's not something that they can answer very easily.
Second bullet from the bottom, in total, that has diminished our reserve accounts to approximately 1.2 million or roughly three to four months of operating reserve. I just figured out how we got to that number, so I'm comfortable, as comfortable as I can be without someone here, assuming that the three point, the 2.3 that I see on the balance sheet is minus the eight, 900,000 or whatever it was, I can't find the number now.
883,000.
Thank you.
Bullet three.
For vehicles?
Yes.
Five ambulances.
It's a collateral, collateral against future purchases, so they have to set that aside so that it's available to them when the vehicles arrive, and.
In cash.
And as Bill explained to us, it's like fire department vehicles. When you order the vehicle, it takes an easily two years or more in order to construct that vehicle and get it to you. So, you've got, you've got to set that money aside, or at least collateralize it, so that you have the funds available when the vehicle arrives.
But I thought he said there are about $140,000.
Before they're outfitted, Nancy. That's just the vehicle.
That's the truck. And what he, what he talked to us about was sometimes you can take the old gear and put it in the new, but not always. All right, so that is.
And just to, for the, for the, as he noted, in 2015, when he was operations manager, they had an endowment or reserve of about $3 million. They made a commitment to this board to spend down from that about 5% per year to offset their other revenues that they might not get. So, the endowment has been decreasing.
Yeah.
Now, you know, essentially, unless they receive a lot of donations beyond what they get from the towns, that's not going to grow.
So, all right, so, I think, I think this has been answered for us, so he gave us this overview that they had three to four months reserve, which starts to be scary. Clearly, our $18,000 increase and the full allocation is not going to change that picture significantly, but it helps. So, does someone want to make a motion to support, to fully support the request of the Bennington Rescue Squad or some other motion? Yes?
I make a motion that we support the squad as requested.
All right, is there a second to that?
One second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Just because the financial information isn't clear, and I know there's been, this has been a real big topic over the years, the endowment money. I'm going to have to vote no, just because I don't have enough information.
Okay.
I want to say on the record that because this is our one opportunity at the year, at the beginning of the year to, to support by funding the rescue squad, I'm going to vote yes on this, but I, and I know that our ask of information is limited, but I would like to commit this to memory for next year so that we ask and get understanding, understandable financials, and I'm, Clark, I'm looking at you because you're liaison, Stu, I'm looking at you.
Wednesday, we'll have that conversation when I, when I meet with them.
So, you've heard my, my comments on the record, please.
Yep.
And I will say, I think Bill's presentations to us have gotten better as, as the years have gone on, so I think he will take a lesson from that, hopefully, especially if Clark makes our, makes this very clear.
Definitely. You know, in the context of my personal bias toward emergency medicine, I feel compelled to, plus my, you know, our town needs it. I mean, we can't do anything that would potentially harm services the town needs, so I'd be hard-pressed to not fully support this, and, you know, for that reason, of course, I will vote yes.
All right.
I will reluctantly also vote yes. I just want us to take a moment and remember the discussion we had about them not pushing for regional, for the investigation of what regionalizing emergency medicine could do to help not only our rescue squad, but the whole region's rescue squads, and I think we need to press them on that. Maybe, you know, the money's a little bit of a carrot, I don't, I don't know.
We offered, we, we.
BCRC.
We suggested that we needed to have BCRC start the conversations, and we're going to, I'm going to do the best I can to make that happen.
But they need to do their part.
Agreed.
Yeah, I totally agree with you. We will do our part, but they need to step up.
All right, anyone in the public that wants to speak to this before we vote? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of supporting the rescue squad as a motion has been stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say nay.
Nope.
Any abstentions? All right, thank you. All right, now we have two, we have a policy, yes? The purchasing policy, oh, and the ethics policy. All right. Who's, who's, who's leading this?
Okay, thank you, Dan. I know we're 45 minutes late, so.
I know.
I leave it to you folks whether you want to take on both of these policies this evening. I would suggest that the, the ethics, municipal ethics policy is more important, so.
All right.
It's up to you folks. I'm, I'm here, I'll stay as long as I need to, but I know we also have an executive session, so I want to be sensitive to that.
So, Dan, can we, can we put both of these on the next agenda, or, or do we need to do the ethics?
I think we can put both of them on the next agenda, because we do have an interim policy approved by the manager, so I think we're fine, and I'm not concerned about putting that off for another two weeks, so.
Okay.
And, and the purchasing policy has been in place since 2019, so neither one of these are urgent.
Yep.
But I also recognize that putting on a next agenda just means that agenda's longer, but.
Right.
Maybe we'll want to start at five instead of six, I don't know.
Maybe.
So, I'm happy to.
Okay.
To proceed, or you can, we can move on to the, what's next?
What's, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to, if we need a motion, I'd like a motion that we table both of them until the next or appropriate agenda.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that?
I have a second.
Okay, Clark, just seconded it. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, super, thank you, thank you, Dan. All right, that moves us to the manager's report.
Yes, I have just one action item for you this evening. As you know, we paid down payroll with the former ARPA funds, and in so doing, we built our fund balance by that amount of money. Now, we're to a point where I'm asking the board to create a reserve entitled the Special Projects Fund. This will allow the board to direct the staff to spend such funds as it deems appropriate for projects that come to the board in the future. The fund would contain 2,595,000, I'm sorry, 2,593,000, I don't have my glasses on.
No, it is 5.
95, thank you. $324.26, which are the, the amount of monies that we did by resolution move from the former ARPA designation. So, I need a motion from the board to create that fund and place those funds into reserve.
All right, someone make that motion?
I move that we create a fund called Special Projects Fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Yes, Nancy?
How much can the board spend without voter approval?
Technically, all of it. It's money that has come to the town, it is money that this board has control.
Other questions? Clark?
Again, is there any chance we put this into some sort of interest-bearing account while this, this fund, will there be any chance to draw any interest on it?
The, the large amount of money will allow us to probably invest some of it, or all of it, or most of it into a CD or interest-bearing instrument, so I think we've been carrying it that way in the past, and so, I would, I know Melissa, yes, there she is, she is, yes, we can do that.
Thank you, I have one question. The label on the fund, on the reserve is vague, and I don't know if there can be anything more clear, but.
Like Ben High and Skate Park?
That would be nice, but probably not.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if there's, if that could be.
Bodacious, bodacious big projects.
Right, if it can't be drilled down on, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, it is a, it is, yeah.
Maybe this is as far as we can drill it to title.
Yeah.
That's our recommendation. We did at the staff level talk about what kind of a title we might come up with, but as, as projects come to us, some may go forward, some may not, and so, we want to be able to have that flexibility to be able to designate those projects that we deem special and that need funding.
Is there a way for the, is there a way for there to be? Is there a way for the—is there a way for there to be some descriptor that says these are former ARPA funds?
No.
That were—
No.
Okay, I'm just asking. Boy, that was pretty unanimous. Okay. All right. Yeah. Okay. Clark?
Just in the title, I don't know if the word "special projects" contingency fund in there, would that help narrow it down a little bit, Mr. Woods, or no? Is it contingency?
Thank you.
You're feeling your pain.
Contingency sounds like rainy day, not—so I know where you're going, but it's—if—when the right project surfaces, it's not going to be a contingency. It's going to fund the project.
Yep.
That would be the goal, yes.
So I—
Okay.
—think I have to—I think I have to live with it.
We could say it like extremely special project.
Okay. All right, guys. Any other from us? Yes?
The money came to our town, and obviously, we already have an account now, and I think if we're going to spend over a quarter or a half a million dollars, I think the public should be able to weigh in on it.
Nancy, that is not the topic.
Well, I'm just—
Okay, you've made your statement. Yeah. You've said your say. Anything else from the select board?
Yeah, I'd just say to that—that when we do spend the funds, it'll be done by this board in public—
Yes.
—where the public will be invited to comment, and that's a system that's been working for Bennington for a very long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the public that would want to speak on this, since we're going to vote? Okay. Seeing none? All those in favor of creating this fund, as we made a motion, right?
We have one.
We did that, okay. All of them, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? No. Okay. Perfect.
And there was one other item that's under the informational section. You have in your packet a letter from the Bennington Aces, which is incorporating in the name of the NJTL of Bennington, Vermont. They have been offered the donation of the tennis bubble, which we lease property to, formerly owned by the former Richard Ader. His estate, or a former corporation, would like to donate that tennis bubble to this new newly-formed nonprofit so they can continue the mission of the Bennington Tennis Center. I intend to sign this lease. It's a lease that's been in place since 2010. I will sign the assignment unless the board objects.
Sounds good to me.
I have no objection. This is an assignment of an existing lease.
Any other—
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
Nancy has a question.
I realized today that we never got a copy of the lease in our packet to read through it.
It doesn't matter. We can't change the lease. All we're changing is the assignment. In five years, it will be up for renewal. Is that—is that accurate?
Yes, it was a 20-year lease.
2010, and it's good.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're not—we're not discussing the lease. We're discussing the assignment.
I'd like to make a copy of that and send it to you.
Okay. Okay, so it's on town land. Do we get rent every year?
Nancy, it doesn't matter. It's a lease.
The lease provides for the space at a dollar per year, which is pretty standard when we're allowing an entity to use our lands for recreational purposes that benefit the public. And so, no, we don't get a lot of rent.
Stuart—
They do pay taxes.
I do want to—yeah, and I do want to—this item is—the lease is in place until 2020—2030? 2030, is that right?
Yes.
So all we are talking about right now is that the person on the lease has died and reassigning that lease. That's the only topic we're discussing. Any questions about that?
Is the total facility right now nonprofit, or is it just part of it?
Bennington—I don't—I actually don't know whether Bennington Tennis Center Incorporated is a nonprofit. It may not be, but the new—the new entity will be.
So it's going to be, I believe, switching from—I think it's—I may be wrong, but I remember the conversation. Originally, they were a private business, and then I think later on, the back part went nonprofit. Now the whole thing will be nonprofit?
The agency that—or the entity that operates the tennis bubble will be nonprofit, yes.
Under Section 14 of the lease, the town may not unreasonably withhold consent if Bennington Aces agrees in writing to all terms of the lease and cures any existing defaults. Bennington Aces does agree to those conditions, and there are no known lease defaults.
All right. So— Please sign.
I'm glad to do that. And then just one last announcement. I am pleased to report that the request for proposals for the town-wide reappraisal was emailed to 14 different approved appraisal firms certified by the Vermont Department of Taxes, Property Evaluation and Review. Due date for those responses is February 28, 2025. So we'll find out if we have any bidders to do our reappraisal.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for doing that. All right. Great. Okay. Upcoming agenda. We have the quarterly report for the Bennington Police Department. We have the ethics and purchasing policy, and we have CPARB. Those are the things I know about. Okay? So, and that seems—
Yes, it's the first public hearing on the charter.
Oh, so we're starting at—we're starting at 5:30—
Yes.
—for the charter review. Thank you for saying that. Yeah. Okay. All right. That's enough on that agenda then. All right, there we go. Other business. Who wants to start?
I can start.
Okay.
I just want to thank the person in the town office who provides the word search in the employee newsletter. I did it last night, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. I love doing them.
Nancy?
I'd like to know if there's any interest in having Jonah putting something on the homepage of the town website so that voters know if they'd like an absentee ballot mailed to their home, they have to contact the town clerk. I think there's a lot of confusion. I think people think they will automatically get it because the state mailed them out for state elections.
That's a nice idea. Yeah.
I checked with the town clerk's office. She said very few people have contacted, and, you know, we've got 10,000 voters. It would be great to have 5,000 people vote, march, but—
That's a great idea. Okay, so—
And just the other thing, a lot of people still don't realize, you can call into select board meetings now. Legislature changed the law last year. I think it went into effect in July. You know, to have the first public hearing on the charter, it's important that not just the board, but citizens hear from other citizens. So if you can't come to the meeting, I hope people call Jonah to arrange so you can call in.
Yeah, just know that we don't have a—
We don't have what?
—really reliable system. Yeah.
Well, that's the law.
I mean—I mean, it just—it will be frustrating for people, but yeah. Okay. I want to—I'm going to—I'm going to ask Stu to explain something. I was reading a Facebook page, and there has been a post up there for—well, I mean, it's on Clark—it's on the Talk to Clark Adams Facebook page. And it's been up there since the 6th, and I want first to remind people that if you want an answer about—a question about how the town functions, it's really—the town has a comment line. You just click on it, put in your name, you ask your question, and then the town gets back to you. But I think this is something that gets—we get asked a lot, and particularly when people start paying their water bills. But there was a notice on there that said, "Just paid my $300 water bill. Water's not even drinkable," which is something I think that person should follow up and talk to the town. But you pay the same amount for three as for eight, so they don't know they don't have to have a flat rate. And then it says, "All the money—all the water comes from Morgan Springs, but where does the money from—the cell of money of water from Morgan Springs go? Why doesn't it reduce my water bill?" And so, Stu, I would ask you to please just answer that.
There are two—there's a mistake in there. We have two sources of water. One is Bull Brook, which is a surface source that—we see the treatment plant up in the town of Woodford. Morgan Springs is actually our secondary source, and it is used to provide water to the various tanks that we have around town to continue to provide factor of safety in case something goes terribly wrong, or there's a fire in the community. Those tanks provide that extra water. As to the dollars amount, we generate from the sale of water approximately $100,000 a year, and those—that money is shown as a revenue in market sales. So when the board looks at the budget, that is clearly a revenue that is shown to the board as an anticipated revenue, and it helps reduce your water rates because that is $100,000 as it comes into the budget that otherwise would have to come from the rate bears.
So yay. Thank you.
Was that your only comment?
That was my only comment.